Okay.
Yeah.
Welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education meeting for May 30th of 2019. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, there is a couple agenda modifications. We're pulling 11.4, 11.5, 11.6, and 11.7. Can I have a motion to amend the agenda?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, upcoming events. And it's really short. The next Board of Ed meeting will be on June 13th here at the district office at 7:00 PM. And on to pride. Patrick?
Uh, yeah, there's not too much pride tonight just because of the long break that we had. We haven't had much school since the last meeting, but the girls softball team played their sectional game today. They beat Kwanwal. The boys baseball, their game was rescheduled tomorrow because the fields were a little bit too wet to play on today. And in FDR, you know, the seniors are just, we're getting ready for graduation, preparing stuff for that and senior week and prom next Friday, so that's really it.
Is there any other pride?
I think you forgot an upcoming event. The, on June 5th, there's a bandemonium, Concert in the Park.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
That's right, first one.
Any other pride?
I went to the academic awards presentations at the high school, and as usual, it was outstanding, the number of students, and there's so many varied areas that they've been getting awards, and it's just amazing. And it has been streamlined to the point where they kept it under two hours, which is a blessing.
I have a couple. I wanted to add that the Field of Honor, it was the second year. It was very successful again, beautiful weather, and Bill Mansfield opened up the ceremony. And also the Community Foundation, there are five grant recipients, then they will be hearing soon if they haven't already. And then also our tenure recipients who are here, some of them are here, some of them unable to make it, so we just want to congratulate them there later on in the agenda for approval, our teachers and teaching assistants.
Any more pride? Okay, on to superintendent's report.
Okay. So I just want to give an update on mental health staffing. For anyone who's not a staff member, Dr. Rycheck did send an email earlier this week informing all of our staff that we'll be adding three new positions for this coming school year to ensure that each elementary school is staffed with a full-time social worker and full-time psychologist. I had already been preparing an update for the board on our safety initiatives for the June 27th meeting, and now I'll be enhancing that presentation to include everything we've done over the past several years to address mental health in our schools as well as our next steps going forward, besides the additional staffing.
Okay, on to 7.2, General Fund, Fund Balance, Reserve Presentation. Linda?
Good evening. Alrighty, so, um, tonight I'm going to talk about our general fund, fund balance. I did my first presentation on this last June. I think it's something that I'll talk to the board about every year because it's really important that the board stay up on that and understand what we have in our fund balance and our reserves. So in addition to this presentation, there is a draft fund balance and reserves plan in board docs for the board to see. It does accompany this presentation, so I wanted to make sure it was available. Last year, we had the board approve the fund balance and reserves plan in June, but I'm actually going to wait until August and ask for you to approve it then so that it'll actually reflect our finances after the auditors are here. So, um, this slide just explains a little bit about fund balance. I won't read everything, but I just would like to say that quite often people think that fund balance is the amount, that surplus from just one year, like from the most recent year. However, fund balance is an accumulation of leftover funds from budget year to budget year. So it's an accumulation from the history. So fund balance also consists more of just the unassigned fund balance, which is what we usually talk about. The unassigned fund balance is the portion that's restricted to 4% of the next year's budget, but all of the categories listed here make up total fund balance. Non-spendable is what's spent in one year for the next. For the school district, that's usually our health insurance payment that we make in June for July, and we have to categorize that as non-spendable to make sure the funds are there for the year that it actually applies to. Restricted fund balances are the general fund reserves. I have more information on that later in the presentation. We don't use committed fund balance. School districts usually don't, but that is a category that we could use, so that's why it's listed here. Assigned fund balance is what we appropriate to each school year budget to reduce the tax levy. And as I already mentioned, the unassigned is the portion that is limited to 4%. I have, um, two pages of history. I did show this last year, but I think it's important just to look at it again so you can see where we were at one point and where we are now. So back in 2005, we had very little fund balance. We had less than a million dollars. We did build that up over the next five years, and I believe that's what saved the district when we had a state aid cut in 2010. You can see in 2011 and 12, we had large amounts assigned to the budget, and that was to help cushion against the loss in state aid, and we were able to avoid a lot of cuts that other school districts were making at that time. And for that reason, I think it's important that we always have a healthy fund balance so we can guard against things like that again in the future. This slide is just the more recent years for fund balance. The last column is my estimate for the end of this school year. You'll see in the total column, which is actually like halfway down the page, our expected fund balance at June 30th is $20.7 million. It's a little bit less than last year, but you might remember that last year, the voters approved moving $4 million into the Capital Projects Fund to help offset our large capital project. So we actually still have that $4 million. It's just not in general fund right now. It's in our capital projects. So over the next few pages, there's just some descriptions for the general fund reserves. I'm not going to read all of this either, but I did want to make this available because I do add this presentation to the Budget Office webpage, and I want it there for anyone that would like to read it. More information about this will also be in the plan that I'll ask the board to adopt in August. But basically, the reserve for incumbencies is just an accounting reserve. We hold money there for purchases that we've made, but we haven't paid yet. The unemployment insurance reserve is to offset any unemployment expenses that might exceed what we've budgeted. We have an EBOLAR reserve, which is to pay for employee benefits when people retire or resign from the district. When someone retires, we usually owe them for their accrued vacation time and also for any, or some of their sick time that they've accrued. And when someone resigns or is terminated, we usually have to pay them out for any vacation that they have accrued. The retirement contribution reserve fund is to help offset pension costs. One thing that's new this year, which I'll talk about a little bit more later, is that the state allows us now to save for teachers' retirement. In the past, we could only save for the non-certified staff, but now we can save for all staff. So I do have a recommendation for June, asking the board to approve establishing that reserve. And then the tax sorcery reserve is to pay for judgments when people grieve their taxes. The repair reserve is for unplanned repairs. We don't have the budget funds. This is a little tricky to use because voter approval is required. If the board declares an emergency, we could also use the funds, but then we'd be required to pay it back in two years. And then my favorite reserve is the capital reserve. We do need voter approval to establish, fund, and use capital reserve funds. However, when we spend the money, we actually can earn building aid on it, so it's a way to save money when we know we could get money back for it. And right now, our building aid ratio is 65%. So when we spend money from the capital reserve, we're getting back 65% in aid. So this is the detail of the reserve. So early, I showed you the detail of all of the fund balance. This is just the reserve portion. So we've built up reserves because, mainly because we had been adding to our capital reserve. For the end of 2019, I will be making a recommendation to the board to establish the New York State Teachers Retirement Subfund and funding that with $400,000. And I also am going to ask for a little bit more in the tax cert reserve, and that's just based on the claims that we have, the notice of claims that we have. And you'll see that the capital expense reserve has gone down $4 million, but like I said, we still have that money. It's just in another fund right now. Alright, so listed here are the recommendations that we'll be making. So on the June 27th board agenda, we'll have a resolution to establish and fund the New York State Teachers Retirement Subfund for $400,000. There'll be a resolution to close the 2014-15 tax sorcery reserve and transfer that money to unassigned. The reason why we have this on there is we're only allowed to keep the tax sorcery reserves for four years. However, we learned in the past, the court sometimes make judge, will make a judgment on a tax cert that's older than that. We've had to pay tax certs before that were 10 years old. We'll also be asking to establish a reserve for 2018-19 and fund it with $1.1 million and to stay compliant with real property tax law, Section 1318, which is the law that requires our unassigned stay below the 4% of the next year's budget. We'll ask for a resolution just stating that the board could make a decision about reserves after June 30th, but before they set the tax levy. So the estimates are, the information that I have on the estimated June 30th fund balance is just that, it's an estimate. We're still paying bills, we're still receiving money, so we might wind up being over the 4% if we don't make another change. And then also in August, we'll have the final fund balance and reserve plan that we hope the board will adopt. We do have to adopt a plan every year and post that on our website. I don't have any more information, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, talk about it.
Any questions?
For the tax cert, why, why do you think that's going up so much?
It's based on the claims that we received. When, when an attorney files a claim with the court on behalf of a client, they send us a copy. And we typically ask the board to allow us to reserve up to 80% of what, of what the potential claim could be. So we received a lot more claims this year than we had last year.
Is the number of claims going up each year?
No. Some years it goes down. Our attorney said it's cyclical. They said that we should notice every four years that we would have a surge, and that's actually what we've seen since I've been here.
Any other questions? Thanks, Linda.
Alright, thank you.
So can I have a motion to move into public participation?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board, please go to the microphone and state your name.
Good evening, everyone. Carol Pickering, district resident. First, I want to congratulate everybody on the budget.
Just more than just district residents. She is our past superintendent and has faithfully served this district for years, so.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, congratulations on the past budget and from the board and the administrators and the teachers and the whole community. It's something I will never take for granted, so it's just wonderful, and Jay did a great job, so thank you. The real reason I'm here tonight, or I should say a more, maybe a more important reason, is to congratulate on Mr. Dan Duffy for his 18 years of service to our community as a member of the board. Dan, 18 years is a generation. That's a generation, and I served with you for half of those, for the first nine years. And when Dan joined the board, this was a district that was in real trouble. You know the quote from the Music Man, "We've got trouble right here, right here in River City"? We had troubles, and only a few might remember or choose to remember. Mr. Hughes was on the board then, and Mr. Heda was very close to coming on the board. But anyway, Dan stepped up when it was incredibly critical. I remember a colleague, Jim Welling, who Aviva knows and some of you may know very well, he worked with us for a long time as an interim. He said, "You know, Carol, sometimes districts get so close to the edge, they can't come back. They go over the edge." And he was kind of suggesting that could be where we were. Well, guess what? That's not how it turned out. It has and continues to evolve into a greatly improved and a district of which I'm very proud and choose to, to still live here. And, you know, test scores are not a measure of a school district. Test scores are a measure of wealth. They're a measure of resources that are available to a school district. What measures a school district, in my view, are programs and staff, administrators, teachers, boards of education, and those are, and, you know, as an example, the orchestra program just makes me deliriously happy. It's just one small example of how I've seen this district grow and become a place I would continue to be proud to send my children and my grandchildren. But Dan, that's largely because of you. Yes, we know we don't do it alone. Others, others do it with us. But it's because of your commitment and your dedication and your, always, my years with Dan, so civil and always listening. And you'd think, okay, we should take civility for granted in this day and age? We don't take civility for granted. And we didn't always agree. We commonly did. But we mostly disagreed about whether Fordham and the Jesuits were better than that, some other school that I can't remember.
Aw, come on, Carol. Manhattan and the Brothers of the Christian School?
Oh, I knew you'd, I knew you would remember. And when Dan would come by in district office, he would always stop in to say hello and pull out his smartphone, which I think he's had mostly so he could show me pictures of his latest grandchild. Very, very, very family-oriented man, always very proud of his family. So Dan, I, it's not lost on me, and anybody who doesn't know, I speak on their behalf, that you have made an enormous contribution. And this week, we've talked a lot about thanking people for their service. There's lots of kinds of service, and I thank you for your service, and, and will always be grateful for what you've done for the Hyde Park Central School District.
Thank you, Carol.
Good evening. Steve Hughes, district resident. First, I would also say congratulations to Dan for making through alive. He and I served for several years together, and while we didn't always agree, we always shared putting the school district first and doing what was best for it. The bulk of my comments, however, are in respect to the public participation from the last board meeting. I recognize that the district has created more social worker spots, which I assume is either in part or all of their response to those comments. However, if I were a prospective home buyer looking at Hyde Park and the Hyde Park School District, and in my research saw that video, my takeaway would be of a school district where student outbursts, if not frequent, at least were not rare, and when they occurred, disrupted not only one student, not only one student's classes, but several classes in vicinity. And I certainly would not want to put my child in such a school district. My first question is why that matter was brought up in a public participation session? It seems to me that matter is talking about working conditions and the solution proposed of additional staffing and additional training and procedures. Those are all work issues and should be addressed in contract negotiations. My second question is the district's response at that meeting seemed rather lackluster. Either the situation is not as bad as the teachers made it out to be, or the district had no idea of how to respond. I think the district owes to the public, especially the public that was either at that meeting or views it online, an idea of what their response is going to be. And I recognize that that plan will take time in developing, but at least the public needs to be aware of that plan is occurring and how that plan is going to be developed. Thank you.
Does anybody else would like to address the board?
Mary Beth Scatag, the president of the HPTA. I just want to thank the Board of Education for their response to our concerns that were addressed at the last public session. The district is beginning to take the lead dealing with issues of trauma and violence, both in our schools and in our community. We continue to look forward to work with the district to improve the mental health of both our students and staff, and we are very grateful for the step forwards that had occurred in the last couple weeks. Thank you.
Does anybody else would like to address the board? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. Carol, first, I would really like to thank you for honoring Dan the way you did. It's really appreciated. Aviva, you would like to share the district's response?
Yeah, and Steve, I know you planned your remarks before the superintendent's report, but that was really my intent, is to say that the additional staffing to let the public know, since they may not yet be aware of the additional staffing that we plan, and also that my June 27th safety report is going to include all of the work we've done in mental health and all of our plans going forward. So, you know, we really did want to incorporate that because safety is not just about door hardening and response, but about prevention as well and relationship building. So the public can either be present or, or look at that film later and get to see that report, and it'll be posted as well.
Okay. Is there anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I would like to thank Carol for her comments. I appreciate it really. Obviously, you understand, I don't see my contribution in quite the perspective you did. I stepped in at a time when there were people on the board that were of a philosophy that hurt me, as I had started to attend Board of Education meetings some couple of years before I actually went out for the board. They were of the opinion that if I had an opinion, they were going to give it for me, give it to me, and let me, let me repeat it for them. Their only opinions were the ones they had. They had no way, they had no interest in listening. I felt that there was a need for a voice. In fact, there were two voices. Kevin Sheehan joined the board at the same time that I did, a wonderful and, I think, a better member of the board. I learned everything I did from Kevin. I learned to work with him. I learned how to work with him. I learned how to discuss problems by watching him. I guess the only thing that hurt was the fact that the gap between my kids graduating and my grandkids growing up to the point where I'm looking to have some time with it was wide enough to allow me to squeeze 18 years in between. And they're outnumbering me now for those. I had eight children in the school. When I joined the board, all eight had graduated. All eight were attending in colleges, and I had a great, great debt of service that I felt I owed the district in terms of just making people understand what was going on and how good the district was as compared to what sometimes came out of the board meetings we had and the raucous discussions that, that occurred. So, you know, my, my goal was just to make people understand how good this was working and how well it was working, and the thing that made the big difference, surprise, surprise, was Carol Pickering. Somebody came in with a calm, understanding way of dealing with things, somebody that could quiet the boisterous and encourage the quiet to speak and glean from the words that were said, the truths that were helpful to the district and combine us to pull it forward. So thank you for that, Carol, as much as for my service, thank you, for the discussion of it.
Also, I wish that didn't, it did not come to the head that it had at the last board meeting. I was out of town during that one, but yes, in the future, I would hope that we would work better together before it comes to such a head. I will say that we, as a district and the teachers' union, will be working together to help resolve this so we can come to a much better agreement than just what we're looking at. So we are looking this to the future and see if we can do better changes. Okay. On to consent agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.1, Special Education placements?
No move. Second.
Any discussion?
I review the pack and recommend its adoption as presented.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Post, motion carries. Before we go on, I would like to, with the consent agenda, to recognize all our tenured teachers that are here. If you please could stand up. So. Thank you. Okay, 11.2, Vendor Agreement Amendment, CSRH Capital Project Door Hardening Project.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3, Vendor Agreement, CSRH Capital Project, the FDR Men's Lobby Bathroom?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion for second public participation?
No move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion? If anybody else would like to come and address the board, please go to the microphone.
Gee, it seems like I was just here.
Somebody looked like you.
I'd like to thank Mr. Danielson for his comments. I'd like to thank Mr. Danielson for his comments. I think it's unfortunate that such a brief concise statement couldn't have been made at the last meeting because that would have mitigated the impact of the rest of the public participation for any uneducated viewer of the video, but thank you for saying it now.
Anybody else like to address the board? Public participation is now closed. There is no other matter deemed necessary by the board. There's no need for a second executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, can I just say something?
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to thank everybody for passing the budget. Right, we, we work hard to be a responsible district and, and everybody, Linda, we all review those finances so hard and everything, so thank you for supporting our school district.
Anybody else have anything to share? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. This meeting is now adjourned.